Welcome to the County Commissioners's regular meeting for March 7, 2023. Thanks to Rob and Rich for hosting us here for the year. I have too much to offer. So be it. I'd like to call meeting order and Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Sure.
Here.
Commissioner, as our all go here, you stand and join the complainable ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the Bill of Rights and justice.
Thank you. I have three public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing for amendments to the Allen County flatting and subdivision resolution. Anybody in the room speaking on or against the amendments to Allen County flatting and subdivision resolution? Hearing is seated. How about online? On or against amendments to Allen County flatting and subdivision resolution? All right, last chance in person and online. Commissioners, any motion to close that public hearing?
Move second.
Move in second. Further discussion. Hearing is seated. All is favored. Signify by saying hi please.
Hi.
Hi, all closing back. That motion carries. Second public hearing amendments to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Allen County budget. Anybody on or against the public hearing for the amendments to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Allen County budget? How about online? Last call in person and online. Commissioners, any motion to close that public hearing?
So move second.
Move in second and further discussion. Hearing is seated. All is favored. Signify by saying hi please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll close in fact. That motion carries. Item four, comments from the public. Any comments from the public in person here? We are speeding right along. I called in person online. Commissioners, any motion to close the public comment?
The move second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing is seated. All is favored. Signify by saying hi please.
Hi. Hi.
Hi, all closing back. That motion carries. Disponers, Commissioner Jones.
None.
Commissioner, I have. And I have them also. Considerations of changes on the agenda. Anybody have a change to the agenda? Okay. And I've said an approval of the consent agenda. There's, we've approved the entire consent agenda. Pull anything out we'd like. I entertain a motion here, but.
Would that be approved, the entire consent agenda? Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing is seated. All is favored. Signify by saying hi please.
Hi. Hi.
I'll close in fact. Move on to the second page. Items. Present for approval, application for transportation utility systems, telecommunications, and facilities on federal lands and property for the Pilot Hill land project. Senator Matthews, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, your sister.
Commissioner Ibera and Commissioner Jones, thank you for your time this morning. Just a little background on this request for right-of-way access to the federal lands on the Pilot Hill property. As you know, commissioners, you approved a recreation and public purpose lease application for us a little over a year ago. That is in, under consideration by the BLM in the Rollins office. Apparently, they are still awaiting a minerals evaluation on that proposal. And because of that, we're uncertain whether or not that recreation and public purpose lease will be finalized by this spring, which is when we really need to be active on the property. Our hope this summer is to complete Trail 10, which is a major east-west corridor. But it does transition through the 480 acres of BLM lands on the property. So in the interim, the recommendation from the Bureau of Land Management is that we apply for a right-of-way lease. There's no fee associated with the lease because we're not charging for access to the property. But it does give us the authority to go ahead and create those recreation trails through those limited corridors on the BLM while we're waiting the recreation and public purpose lease. The hope is that, that R and P P lease will be finalized within this year. That just gives us a little bit of leeway to continue to move forward with the trail construction. And specifically through that centralized corridor that's necessary. Are there any questions?
Does the Rollins office know about this?
Yes, and they actually were the ones that recommended that we go ahead and do this second application just in the bridge until the R and P P lease can be finalized.
No.
Commissioners. Okay, Dave, a motion.
I move that we approve item eight as presented. Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing is seated. All is favored. Signify by saying hi please.
Hi.
Hi, all closing back. Much, very, thank you, Derek. Appreciate it. Nine, discuss Allen County adopting a county property tax relief program outlawed by Ramis. It said 39103C, number seven. Great, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners Ibera and Jones. We spoke about this back in January. You tasked me with a few things that you wanted to see before moving forward in for discussion. So the first one, we just, you requested were proposed rule for the program. In your packet, you should have received this draft copy. It has changed slightly since I put it in a packet because of passing of House Bill 99, which is now House Rule Act 75. Changed some of the dates for the county program, but also changed some percentages. What the median, went from three quarters of the median household income to 125% and then the allowable assets from 100,000 to 150,000. And then the due dates. Another item you tasked with the proposed budget. Also in the packet should be a worksheet that looks like this. In that left column are all the people, all the amounts for the ones that got approved for the program this last year through the state's program. And then the refund amount that they got, the highlighted in red ones are the maximum amount based on the our county's median property tax refund. And the next column is what their 22 tax amount is right now. And then we kind of, not knowing exactly what the bills would change, we just did a percent of what the refund was of their 2021 taxes and applied that to 2022. And then there's the one yellow one. We just put a max in there because we can't find that property in our county. So we think that maybe the state attributed it to Albany County and it might be someplace that's like on the county line, maybe Platter, Miami, but we just put the max in as a safety. Not short anybody. So with that, you can see that the approximate total based on 2021 would be approximately $67,634 that the county put fund for a property tax refund on the 2022 taxes. If you wanted to increase that because there could be more people that apply on the county level than the state level. I recommend a budget would be 80,000. Of course, once we start hitting into our budget fees, then we can address that amount more then. One of the methods we could probably fund that with is, I don't know if, yes, Chelsea's online. She has alluded to that there's going to be another property tax increase. And we can just take this money off that top of the increase and fund this program and probably still be ahead. Lastly, or not lastly, one of the other items was process. And I apologize if it wasn't in the packet, since my staff and I have been trying to hammer things out. It's not a very hard process by any means. At the bottom of the page, also see there's some questions that we're still ironing out. We want to work with Department of Revenue to see how they handle it. Because we don't need to reinvent the wheel on how we can process. But it's basically pretty easy. It's, you know, we accept it. We're going to have a checklist to verify things. We need to have a process. We do that, income verification and residency verifications and things like that. It's one of those lines. The state does have software that does this and you guys had asked me to get the cost of that and waiting for the state to still get back to me on that. But I'm not the only county that's waiting for that information either. So soon as I know I can get that information to you, I couldn't imagine it's going to be terribly expensive. We currently in our office have access to RIS, which is the Revenue Information System. So we can look at all the registration and pedal information of all the vehicles registered within the state of Wyoming. And that's approximately $30 a month for us to use that. We use that several times a day. And the last thing I'd like to leave you with is, and this I apologize for the in-your packet as well, it's was the last minute thing with the passing of House Bill 99. And it basically compares the state program on the left side to the county program on the right. They're pretty much identical. And then I've also attached the statute that applies to it and then the copy of House Bill 99 as a reference point.
Now, are there any questions? When you're researching and when you talk to other regulators, did they come in with any insights that have been helpful?
Not so much. Commerce County, I know they have printed a budget at the beginning for this current fiscal year to do it, but they haven't adopted their rules yet. And the rules are very similar to ours because I somewhat plagiarized Joel Schale from Commerce. With permission, but he's very good and adept at writing rules and everything. Lincoln County, I don't know that they have rules. The fact that I know they have budgets. Southern County is already moving forward and as well as Teton County. But Teton County is also waiting information on the program because they're going to probably have a lot more applicants because they were affected more by the pandemic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Tracy, what's the deadline for this application?
The application for the county would be the first Monday in September each year. I guess it's time to also see what the state has issued for refunds. So they can't get more than 100% of their property taxes back between the state and county. This would also go. We would prepare the list by December 15th according to the rules that you seen. That would give you the list of who and how much. And then we would submit vouchers for each of those through the voucher system that would be paid that way.
Tracy, administrative, the junior office. Did we say quite a few hours?
I don't think so. I mean, if you look at my office right now, we're super quiet right now. Everybody's it's strange because February, we used to be our biggest month. And right now we are in the lull, but of course, property tax even is coming up real fast. We're already helping and the people coming in applying for the state program. Breanna in my office, she used to prepare taxes before. So she's really good at helping people with the form. I don't see that being a change. And she's just going to help them with the county form as well. Different deadlines, of course. So I don't see it being really a problem. And I find, in my own opinion, this to be very important to our county and our residents. Because so many people were struck with the increase and there's been, I can think of three people in my office wondering how to fix their property taxes or lower their property taxes, but it's you know, between Chelsea and I working with everyone, it's heartbreaking to see you know, the elderly on their fixed social security income. And their bills keep going up, like all of us, our groceries, our fuel, our gas. And if this is one thing that can help them, I, we can be busy to help them.
Yeah. Yeah. If there's a reduction in property values, have you anticipated that for some reason? I'd say the property values are down 3%, 5%. Have you thought about that?
I have not. I don't foresee that immediately, but that is a very good point that we can address that and add that into the rule.
Mine is that the network is really low. And I think that we need to be able to help those people as much.
And then second home, I mean, the second home in Wyoming. How is this state able to bear that out there in Colorado?
I'm not positive. You'll see that on our procedures. That's actually one of our questions on there too. If it's in Wyoming, we can find out, of course, because of the network of counties. Depending on the value of that second home, if it's more than 150,000, I would take them out already from the program being eligible as it stands right now. Because the only thing that are excluded from the 150,000 asset test is the value of the home they're applying for, which is their primary principal residence. One curving water vehicle. Any household furnishing, furnishings or personal property. Their assets of a retirement account or other bona fide pension plan. The cash value of life insurance policy, health and assets in a medical savings account. Those don't apply towards 150,000. But if they own you know, pickup camper, second home, all of those are going to apply to that. As long as they're under 150,000, they would still be okay.
I do appreciate this research. Thank you, Tracy, and then the recommended budget. I did look at that in the other day and I was like, oh, did you change it? No, buddy.
No, and that could definitely change the budget. I think if we round it up for 80,000, I mentioned that. It would be fairly safe, but we could always amend the budget if needed.
Awesome. Thank you. And Chelsea, if you've done work on this, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, we've been very helpful. There are complaints, not your roles.
I understand. That's been a very, that's been a tiger tree for tree planting and sound blocking and paid for the step by, good morning.
Good morning. Hey. David, I only got one minute to do this.
I'll share.
Sure. You heard for, we have two different. Okay. Tiger tree, we've asked them a long time. We're going to give us a cross on this. We're concerned that if we lost more and more cottonwoods, especially on the Grand Canyon side, that it could look pretty stark on on the courthouse there. And if we could get something that would establish, we should probably try and do so. So we, we added some money in step tax, but we have two estimates. One is the 5,250. The other one is for 2,450. So it's quite a bit less, but having much. And the difference is besides the trees that were in the plant. Things grow slow here. They, and I think that, you know, the bigger the better. You can do them a better chance. Give them all that we might have. And so if it was my choice, I would say that 5,250 would be the the best option. It's a two-inch maple. You can see them out there. They're all sensational maple. They say they do really, really good around here. Give you some color also in the fall and and even in the summer, they have some pretty nice colors, you know, that's pretty nice, you know. You know, they won't go huge. They'll be about 30 feet in maturity, about 20 feet wide. Then over with Sheriff Alhambon. Kind of what we were looking at for our security, where, you know, maybe somebody coming in. Got a couple places picked out. We'll probably put a couple on each corner of the lodge and then one a little bit further along. Closer to the entry and a little away at somebody, I would drive like stadium or whatever. If they went off the road and came towards the front of the building, but it's up to you guys, whatever you think. I know that area does get some good wind. So I think the bigger the tree, the better. So it's up to you.
Do you know what's the water use compared to cottonwoods?
It's, you know, well, well drained or whatever. It looks like we'd be fine with just their sprinkling. Well, we're watering a lot anyway.
Right, but cottonwoods are a big water sucker.
Oh, absolutely.
That's why I would join you again.
And those roots, those trees are, some are pretty deep and go down in some other stuff that otherwise they couldn't be even still alive, you know? So where they get their roots, but they'll go a long way. But you're right. I forget how many gallons of they, the cottonwood can actually take out. But I don't think they've turned our lawn too much.
No, I wasn't worried about that. It was like, we were going to, the watering for these young trees would be adequate. So that's, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yep. And they said it would be adequate, just with the the sprinkler, the lawns that we got going on. But I think this is for southern trees. I might change it to fix. I can only change it to six. Seven or six will do the lot area we're talking about. I was thinking about maybe putting one in one of the areas where we lost trees, you know, and putting one more on one of those corners. Pretty stark between the defense center and that. And the courthouse there, we lost that. Well, we lost actually three in that area. Five, two since I've been here, but that whole corner was kind of. And it would kind of look good with the stuff the city has going down that, that area too. They, it would kind of match up pretty good on that stuff.
I was sure thinking you need to put more in than less.
Bigger, I mean.
Well, bigger, but, but seven instead of six.
Okay, yeah, you do. I would like to have that and kind of get an idea how that's going to work for the future whoever's in my place and they want to get something going with that. Because there's the mother on the on the east side that we've lost two that, right? We haven't lost any on the on Iverson yet. Which, some of them, some of them are kind of scary to look at. You know, I, I basically nervous with a four wheeler underneath the, some of those areas. And I keep, I want to take a good look. It's, it's fine. It's fine. Because we haven't looked, once a year, they do an inspection on those. To let us know when they trim. And so we've been on top of that for a few years now. Do our best to make everything safe. But you're right. I think it's going down every time.
And I would think that we would try to do the seven this year. And just some more next year and.
Yeah.
Roy's has come with, I think they do twice a year, beating, like spring and fall.
I had a estimate right here. See, I know it, I know it comes with, I think they have a guarantee. I know germs, so. I'll look on, I can't remember reading about it, but.
Yeah, I don't remember. But they would recommend that keep these alive for the first three years until we get established that you know, whatever it is, three hundred bucks, whatever tree you're on.
Okay.
Commissioners, anything else for Ryan? Any data motion for Ryan, attend then.
I move that we approve the purchase of seven. Please, at the amount of 5,250. To be different from the spot funds.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing is being in all of the favor, seeing five, saying hi please.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. That motion carries. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing those trees out.
Yeah.
So when are they going to?
Well, they wanted to do, when they got ahold of me, they said it, either we got to do it this spring or it's going to be, it won't be until next fall. And so I wanted, that's why I wanted to get with you guys and get it to spring, hopefully in April. We'll get it. I'll let you know. I'll keep you guys informed on it and let you know when they're going in. So hopefully there's something they can drive by later, huh?
Yeah.
Remember, we only put those down.
Thank you, Ryan. Thanks, Ryan.
Eleven percent for legal contractors belonging department, help behavior helped in Allen County through the Area Rescue Plan Act. Funding in the amount of 181,539.63 cents through June 30th, 2027 for law enforcement, mental health support services. Sheriff Alhambon and Bailey are here. Sheriff, morning.
Morning, Commissioner.
Any, go ahead.
I was about to say, just bring you up to speed on this grant. This is just the last part of it. Your signatures are required. It's been approved by the governor's office. And so your signatures will allow those funds to come to the sheriff's office and then have us implement. those funds to come to the sheriff's office and then have us implement, uh, basically our, uh, our mental health wellness plan within the, the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner, any question? Uh, Sheriff, I appreciate your forthrightness and willingness to go after this grant, Bailey, thank you too, thank you so much. Truly important, um, an entertainment motion for Ryan.
I move that we approve item eleven is presented. Second.
Who's the second, any further discussion? Here in signal, all the favors of the thing, I.
Hi, hi.
Hi, all the close in sight, please. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Um, for approval, line as well, second notice of default. For Action Resources International, Beating Laramie Valley for public funding. Bailey and, uh, good morning.
Good morning, um. Back in March last year, um, we had emergency funding through the commissioners, uh, for our funding. There were a few that applied. Feeding Laramie Valley, Action Resources was one of them. Um, then again, they applied in June when we did some across the board. Uh, as reports have been coming in, Brady's been in charge of overseeing that, making sure every receipt's coming in, and we've come across a couple of problems with feeding Laramie Valley. Um, the, for, on the second round of funding, well, we've given them one notice of default for this last reporting, reporting round. On the second agreement for their second round of funding, they are just missing, we're still missing receipts for them. And we don't have them. Um, it's about fifteen hundred dollars of receipts. Uh, but they're the only ones who are still missing receipts from. On the second, on the emergency funding, I'll let Jennifer go into more detail about this, but we're having multiple files.
So in your packet, there's two letters, one of them is made out to Action Resources International. That's the recovery funding, that's the limbo we're only missing, the fifteen hundred dollars or so in receipts. The Feeding Laramie Valley letter, however, is problematic because the letter is not problematic, what we've received from her, ear, from them is problematic. This also is the second notice of default, their reporting was not turned in as of the end of, um, January. It was due January thirty first, the first notice of default went out on March, or on February seventh, which was the original notice of default, and said, you haven't provided your reporting. Get it done. This is after Bailey and Brady send out notices in the month after the quarter ends until that report's due, so in January, they send out notices saying your reporting's due at the end of the month. So initially, it didn't get turned in, so then on February thirteenth, the information was received by the grants office. And for Feeding Laramie Valley, there are numerous deficiencies in the information that was received and in the reporting, and it's outlined in your, um, letter, and when we got the second notice, or when we, when they, Bailey and Brady got the information on the thirteenth, they looked through it and then approached me and said, we really have a problem, like this is not consistent with what's required. It's, it's not the first time we have had issues, their initial reporting was late, but they let Bailey know on the day it was due that it was going to be late, so we didn't ever send out an original notice of default. So, when we got this quarter's reporting finally, Brady went through it and said, we had a lot of trouble. He provided me all of the information. And I went through it all, the spreadsheets that are attached to the letter are a combination of spreadsheets that Brady and I created to make sure that we were able to tie what was provided to us with what it should be, with what's missing, because I didn't, we didn't want to present to you something where our numbers were off. Um, we don't need to rehash the entirety of this letter unless we have specific questions about it. Um, but it is, this letter is a strongly worded letter, um, and the, the basis for that is that their failure to provide the reporting we need affects our ability to report on the money we gave them, which is a federal grant, which affects our, potentially affects our federal grant status at, for the county as a whole. So.
So we have, uh, when we found the error, hopeful errors, um, Brady and I went through all of them again. Make sure every other entity have provided what they are supposed to, and they have. So, this is the only one that we are having.
And it wasn't until we did this audit that we noticed that the first quarter fund reporting that had been approved included expenses that should not have been approved. They were prior to that timeline, and we didn't catch that until we did this audit. So that's why it wasn't brought up initially, but it is in here now, and it is something. Does anybody have any questions that we can answer?
Can you reach out to Gail or whoever, getting there, maybe, and?
I'm not reaching out without her, that's the point.
So we have not, since we got the, the second, um, or since we got her information on the thirteenth, we didn't reach out to her. We already have a ton of county time in staff time into sorting out her mess without her ever approaching and asking for help. She's in all of the letters and all of everything that's gone out from Bailey and Brady's office, it says, if you have questions, if you need assistance, please call and let us know. And she's reached out a couple of times, but never has there been any questions about reporting, and really, it's not hard.
Here's your expense, here's your.
An outline, correct?
Yeah. Well, this isn't the only time that there've been issues with feeding Laramie Valley. And so I think this is just establishing a pattern, and I think we really need to long and hard at it.
Yeah, we certainly need to get this fixed so that it doesn't impact our grant funding availability, but no, we have not yet reached out to her. We wanted to bring it to you first, so that you're aware, because of the repercussions are potentially very severe for the counties.
So how long do we have before the county's, county is in jeopardy?
The county report, the annual reports due in April, so I need to have all of their documents before the end of April. Uh, the letter that Jennifer dropped in April was eleven, is when the, you're giving her time to get us everything.
We wanted to give her at least thirty days, and we figured with mailing time from today's date, that gives her until then, and then Bailey's reports are due on Thursday. So.
And I'll give you add, with, um, yeah, I have all the other information, so I added one more person.
Um, disappointing news, thank you guys for doing the, uh, the hard work, uh, for the detailed letter. Pretty clear to me, but it needs to be, I hope it's clear to, to be both feeding and valid, um. And you get this done, and we'll have to move to the next step, right, which is, uh, asking for money back. Um, yeah. Requesting it. So. Um, if you need to do something, maybe you reach out, somebody let me know, I'm always happy to, uh, let people know that this is coming, and that we manage to then get on the horses and start vetting us some receipts.
Well, then you should take care of it, they're, they're going to get choked hard, yeah.
So, um.
So what happens if they don't pay the money back?
Then it would end up as a civil suit to recover the money under the contract that they would give it. It has provisions in there that they're required to provide it back to us if they default, which is why the letter's structured the way that it is, so sometimes.
And maybe that would apply to the, the grant. And then, you know.
Yeah, I mean, everything was done with our, we, we, none of her.
It's all well documented with that.
Yeah, this, our, this money I knew would be under a microscope, and I didn't do anything. Um, it's frustrating because this is an organization that does, to my knowledge, these settlements on their own, and we have organizations, organizations that we funded through the ARBA that don't repeat any federal funding, and they can still follow the the rules of the.
Well, they should know, they should be more aware than anyone else what the rules are and.
Okay, well, uh, Mr. I've entertained a motion for item twelve.
That we approve the second notice of default for Action Resource International, giving you a, from our.
Second.
Who's the second, any further discussion? Here you can see that all the favors in five by saying, I.
Hi.
Hi, all the close in sight. I'm motion carry. I am thirteen, present for approval grant application to AEDgrant.com for the purchase of twenty AEDs for Allen County Building. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner, thank you very much. Uh, this is just a grant application to purchase, uh, twenty additional AEDs, like automated external defibrillators uh, for our county buildings, several of our county buildings don't have any at all. Or our, uh, they don't have enough for their buildings. So Bailey did some research, found a grant that we could apply for, and Roy went around to all the buildings and asked all the, the department head and all the officials how many they think they will need, and this was the number we came up with. Bailey did inform me that this grant may not cover all twenty that we're requesting, um, but it's a good start so that we can get some, some lifesaving devices in our buildings.
Mr. Anything? Yeah, I think they've been used, AEDs been used.
At least once in this building, so, yeah.
I'm attending motion for item thirteen.
I move that we, uh, approve item thirteen is presented. Second.
Who's the second, any further discussion? Here in signal, all the favors in five, those A I.
Hi, hi.
Hi, all the close in sight. I'm open, there is, and thanks for giving that grant, um, or pursuing the grant. Yeah, uh, I'm fourteen, present for consideration amendments, the Alhambria fighting and subdivision regulations. David, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Sure, Sheriff, um, the plans on a commission is certified by their recommendations for the post amendments to the subdivision regulations. Matt Ayers, Deputy County Attorney, um, who kind of quarterbacked this project, um. He got us some information, those changes from the planning office, as well as worked with our county engineer to go through, um, the regulations and get them updated. Um, the, the substantive changes were to chapters one through five. Um, and, but there, there have been changes through the entire document, formatting, um, reading the language and those types of things. Um, just run through really quickly and, uh, the basis of what happened here. This revised formatting styling, unchanged chapter and page numbers from Latin to Arabic numerals. Um, throughout the entire subdivision resolution, refined language and organizations for, for clarity and consistency. I don't know if you guys like read it before, just for fun or whatever, but there, there were places where there was difficult language in different chapters, and that's just been there for long as I can remember, even though, so, a lot of that was cleaned up, so that's been really good. Um, update provisions to match the statutory and changes that have occurred over the years that affect subdivisions in the county, provide a new and revised definitions applicable to the subdivision resolution. Mened procedures and provisions for the review of subdivision permit applications by the planning and zoning commission and the board, and provide a proper process for a separate review of preliminary class reports and final class subdivision applications for major subdivisions for a three or more parcels, or, or more than three parcel that are less than thirty five acres each, and provides, provided, amend, and amend standards and requirements for application for various types of subdivisions. So, I mean, that's kind of the basis of it. Um, is there anything you'd like to add, Matt, since you kind of go deep into this project?
Yeah, um. Mr. Sheriff, Commissioners. Uh, I think that the, the original impetus for these changes, uh, was this board's request, uh, that the preliminary and final plat review process be split out, um, which is, is common, uh, throughout the state. Um, most of the more populated counties do have that permission. Uh, then, then with that, um, just came a lot of, uh, necessary updates. Um, we were a few versions behind of state statute. Uh, so just catching that up, um. Yeah, I, if there are any specific questions, I could probably talk a lot. Because it was fun. Uh, a lot of them also are terribly substantive, it's either just us, um, coming up to date with, uh, state statute uh, or just reorganization.
What do you think were the most substantive changes?
Uh, I believe that that is the, the provision that the preliminary plat is reviewed by um, planning and zoning commission and county commissioners prior to, uh, an applicant, then providing an application for a, uh, subdivision permit, um. Uh, before people could turn those in together, um, this just allows for uh, for, for more, I guess, thoughtful review of proposals, um, and also as I s- I suppose, issues, um, that, uh, the county may have to be addressed by an applicant. Um, in honestly, I guess, a more responsive manner, um, just because that timeline is a little extended. Uh, but that, of course, only applies to, um, what we have now turned major subdivisions, which is, uh, subdivisions of three lots. Or sorry. It's more than three lots. Yeah, more than three lots.
So how much time is this adding to the process?
I, I can answer that, um, okay. So. Typically, the process is for three or less lots, we've always allowed them to run, um, the preliminary final plats together, that's kind of how we see it. Sometimes they choose to have those separately. Um, I would say the majority of those subdivisions that are more than three lots, they, they choose to do a preliminary plat first and then do a final plat. So it shouldn't cause any additional time, for the most part. There have been a few instances where they've asked to have those ran together, but it's been very few since I've been here, so. So really, it's not going to be much difference, you know. I mean, technically, if, if they did wrote, review it together, you know, it takes three months to run through the preliminary, three runs, or three months to run through the final. But a lot of times, I mean, even, even when we cut them together, they'll run them together, and then there's problems, and then it ends up taking the same amount of time, so.
And that is why David, they're choosing to sometimes separate on their own at first.
Yeah, yeah.
Application.
I mean, it really is like smart to do it that way, just to make sure they get all of their problems figured out. They would, really, when they get the final plat, it should just breeze through, you know, that, that's how it should be, it's supposed to be heavy on the preliminary, to make sure all the issues are taken care of, and then the finals just basically get the signatures done.
Okay, thank you, David.
Ricky?
I just want to say, uh, thanks, I know this was initiated from previous, uh, permission. And I'd like P Z and filing and Matt a little bit to work, so thank you for doing that. Matt, too, I know the updating of the, um, to the state statutes took a lot of time, I really appreciate you dealing with that, because I think we need to do that with a lot of our documents and, uh, make sure that we do that. I have one question, um, David, it doesn't appear that you got any kind of public input, was, uh, were local engineering companies asked to respond to this, to put in comment, and they just didn't, or were they not reached?
Trying to think of the process, I believe we did send out information to, on those that we work with on a regular basis, but we didn't receive anything back.
And I know you work closely with, uh, Dave, but you just weren't doing it.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that was a suggestion by planning and zoning commission, I mean, it's been a few months ago, but we did send their document out and asked for their review. I can go back for her to make sure that I'm telling you correctly, but I think I sent an email, um.
I didn't see anything.
Yeah, we haven't really seen this.
Okay, thank you, um, this is not riveting maybe, um, but it does make this job so much better and so much easier, it's coherent, and it's up to date. Um, and thank you for doing that work, I really do appreciate it, this is really helpful, guys. Um, amazing, so. Awesome, I've entertained a motion for item fourteen.
I mean, we, uh, approve item fourteen as presented. Second.
Who's the second, any further discussion?
Hi, all right.
Hi, all at the same time, please. Guys, uh item fifteen, present for consideration amended platform for lot four Alabot subdivision, you're a good morning.
Morning. Um Lawrence Marshall has requested a boundary line adjustment for lot four Alapla subdivision. Uh this is an exemption, um. Since the boundary line adjustment occurs within a plat subdivision and amended plat must be approved by Florida county commissioners, um. We've reviewed everything, met, has been reviewed, all necessary information is included and your approval is requested.
I move that we provide in fifteen minutes. Second.
Gary said you're. Then what was that on resolution? Unencumbered. Or unextended appropriation bound from one fund to another and admitting appropriation for fifty years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
Good morning, Commissioner. So we. In the budget last year, we decided to pay all of the second four salaries out of. Arco funding so that we could transfer general fund funds, so we could do that for the public health building or whatever we were going to do with that. So upon doing so, Amanda already should spend some money, we realized that in France office, because we lose. Their salary to matching funds on federal grants. So we're just going to print that money in front of this report, it will be paid. That are will be paid out of there rather than. So in order to. Transfer it between, we have to do the amendment, so.
Move that we prove our position twenty twenty-three to seven.
Who can say that?
Hi, hi.
Hi, all at the same time.
So Amanda explained this to me that it's a government reporting for healthcare and pharmacy benefits that we've required. While we were under who cross, so this needs to be signed so they can submit this reports.
I move that we approve item seventeen as presented. Hi, hi.
I'm eighteen, present for approval, first amendment to the contract between the board of commissioners of the county of Albany. And W W C engineering for engineering services for the purpose of extending the original contract for June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
So in twenty twenty-one, we put out an R F E for engineering services when the billworm had left, and that's when. We hired W W C, their contract under that original R F E expires June thirtieth of this year. But it allows for extension, so rather than going back out to R F E. Given the quality of work that we've gotten from W W C. Um we'd like to extend their contract for another two-year period. And that also um ensures that we have the same engineer for who's working on all these big projects. So this will likely be the first of several. Extension contracts you see coming to you or the next.
Remind me, Jen, do we always just do two-year period?
We do, we do, because it coincides generally with the terms of the board, there's. Peace law in Wyoming that if you're contracting for services, it shouldn't go beyond the term of the board. So we end up off a little bit with the board that changes in January and the contracts that expire in June, but it. It keeps us closer to that timeline, so that we're not binding future bills for services.
Thank you. I move that we uh provide an eighteen as presented, second. Hi, hi.
Area, item nineteen, present for approval, memorandum of understanding between the county of Albany and the county of Converse. Wyoming for law enforcement extraterritorial assistance, Sheriff Alwens, welcome back.
Morning, morning Commissioners, this is just a standard um. M O U to share law enforcement uh services. Uh equipment and practices between us and uh Converse counties, so. Kind of a standard M O U that we get. When there's either a change of leadership or a change in terms between the leadership between. Albany and our neighboring counties.
Any motion for nineteen, please.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
Hi, hi.
I'll hold the same cycle. Gary, thank you, Chair. And thank you, Gaila, for the uh cover sheet that's the pretty time to see the updated cover sheet. Worked on that, uh thank you so much, uh it's been really helpful for the budgeting. Change uh if we go forward, so thanks. Uh item twenty, request budget directive from the board of county commissioners specifically your twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'm gonna let Tracy talk first about revenues and then. Okay, good morning again, um everyone's here about revenues in Canada, I'm not pitching for your directors, that'll be uh for. You and I um working on the budget. So I just want to point out some notable items. Um I believe our revenue statement for February was in a package. Um so you probably saw that the property tax were already at seventy-seven point one nine percent. Our. Election for the main with mortgage companies and everything, our portion should be about one and a half million, which will put us over collected for the end of the year with. Just that, I might have about three hundred thousand surplus. Um Pilt. Um as of, I believe, January twenty-third, I should have wrote the date down, I apologize. But approved again for full funding, last year it was um we received one. Million seven hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollar. Um we don't have that much budgeted this year because we usually kind of follow what the W C C A puts out in the revenue estimating manual. Which I think was one point one million, so that gives us an additional amount that should be coming in as well. Uh the direct aid for the um local distribution to counties was approved. From and it was increased overall for all counties from a hundred and five million to a hundred and thirty-one million. We are listed in there for two million five hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars for next fiscal year. And I can send you guys emails to write these number down or give you my sticky note. Um but um last fiscal year, this current fiscal year, we're rolling in for one point six million, so that's a nice little increase and. I think I've mentioned that a couple of you that I have plans for that. Software, but um. And so with all the different revenue. I only looked at my revenues that I collect, because I don't want to speak for, you know, P L's office, putting, you know, doing titles and everything like that, or the shares office with the. With um jail or um outside security or whatever, so shit with my revenues, I'm looking at a projected. Surplus of revenue of eight hundred thousand. To end this fiscal year, but. Um going forward, of course, we always have to think about Pilt. In my twenty, almost twenty years with Albany County, it's always been such a. Better mess, I mean, nobody knows what we're gonna get, that they've not yet taken it away, something, please knock on wood. I think we got some uh really think good things looking going forward.
That's great news, yes.
Said of the budget, like for your office at the eighty-eight five.
I'd probably say at least that, yeah.
Okay, so.
Um I used to have a uh report I would maintain. Um when Tim Solon was on the board, he always liked to see what the top ten revenues were and. Off the top of my head, I know um property tax, motor vehicle. Pilt, clerk tiling, clerk's fees for. Um legal property taxes and self-acting reimbursement. Were the big one. Those are, except for the part fees, obviously, are involved like this.
I could buy a topic, we have a horrible sort of collection, horrible sheriff collection.
There's zeros in there for the remainder for March through June, right now with what I have, that's totally what. I um populated, but I did include uh the scapegoating version for the attorney, because that's pretty much a given as well. Alright, so on the expenditure side, um we're looking at about. Fifty-five percent spent, and so we're okay, um because we're, that is as of February. Of course, we have March through June and some people tend to spend more in that last. Last couple of months, but as of right now, we're looking pretty good on the expenditure side, which is great. Um but I guess looking at the budget, so there are a couple of things, Tracy and I have. And our staff have met a couple of times already, I put a draft. Uh proposed budget calendar on all the guys there. We'd like to shorten up the timeframe a little bit, um if I've talked to Pete and I have a secretary or two of. And there's two about um not giving you guys big budget books, we're gonna try to do everything electronically and I hope everybody is okay with that. I'll maintain one budget book um as an original once everything's been approved. They're trying to go a little more paperless on this side, um. I will probably, I think we'll probably have to do budget here inside here, so this is where we'll be, um so for a little while, maybe not. Well, I don't know, maybe the first one or two, the first one or two we might, we just don't know. Um but you know, we've had them out here before, so um it was not fun times when we had them out here. Yeah, that was not fun, what would that, that won't be this. Um so a little bit of things that I'd like to ask. Directive on your guys' part is, what would we like to look at for salaries? Um I I have, we've had some correspondence with the clerks and. I don't know if I read this correctly, but the state is looking at eight percent raises on there as a cola. Which doesn't seem like a cola to me, but I don't know that we can even. That's, I know, and I'm gonna go back and read that, I was like, wow, that seems pretty big, but um. If you guys want us to look at full as, uh Tracy looked at the salary reserve and there was one point. After the end of this year, it'll be like two million, yeah. Two hundred thousand or something like that, but the transfer you guys approved for this, this, yeah, so. In the salary reserve, we've got some funds in there, so I guess looking at what you'd like us to do salaries, if anything, with salaries. We would like to look at ordering mass paper. For all departments and keeping a surplus of that down in the salary board, so I, when I send out my memo, I will also ask the departments to pull. What they, what they pay for that, and then I would assume we probably would just put it in the commissioner budget, maybe a paper line item or something. More out there, um and I'm happy to do that out of our office, I mean, probably, I'm not sure that she'd love to do it, but. I'm sure she would do it for me, but we could order pallets at a time and then maybe get an idea of how much we would order.
We're only with the city, um we were going to try to work with the city, maybe doing orders like this or. Supplies.
Mayor, they they had a retreat last, maybe, and they were discussing reorganizing the the new people onto their, into our groups.
And then. Oh shredder, yes, looking at a different. Had the worst luck, they these shredders, they don't show up for whatever reason, but they still charge us, yeah. So we want to charge. New shredder, but I think we could save money that we're not getting charged for no service. Yeah, so I we're gonna try to look into. Maybe looking at a different shred company, the only thing, the biggest thing I think for us is it has to shred on state. Obviously, because we don't want to fly across the interstate and then over document or, you know. Um but other than that, I'm trying to think, I don't think there were a lot of other things, really just directed on what. For you guys would like this budget will be forwarded and how we would like. To look at.
Go to the pre-agenda, guys, if you'd like to know, I did ask the question, you know, did you give us numbers for one or some. Three percent raises across board, what that looks like, what that amount of money looks like, um and then. Maybe go from there, if there's some other difference. Ideas, uh please. Let us know, and then I thought that we have done. Things that I did here, if we've done a flat. Budget for people with the exception of the baby raises in different line items, they would provide us like a paragraph narrative. Why the reason? Um that's fine with me, but if there's something else. You guys would appreciate it, let's.
Another things that I think, I don't think you really mentioned on the budget calendar, oh. Because we discussed um only me, that you wanted to meet the departments of their, that's. So sample came to their budget, then you would want to meet with them, but otherwise, everybody, you're. You cut out a lot of those individual meetings because. Yeah, well, that shortened it quite a bit, um. I think we looked at maybe the the afternoon of that June sixth meeting, maybe if we had, if you had stuff, maybe we do it that day and we just make a day other than June sixth. And we make our agenda light and we can have. I mean, right, we can pass a lot of it out, I think, because we're looking at, we'll have to finalize the proposed budget so that we can get it to the paper on the nineteenth. So we were looking at hopefully having a pretty complete budget by that beginning of the sixth. And going forward from there, but if we, I think like Tracy said, if we cut out all of those individual. Meetings, I think that'll, that'll save us a lot of time, and it saves everybody else time too, and like you said, if they're going in the flat budget. What really are they gonna tell you that they didn't tell you last year? So, um and Terry's been here before, so you you know, you know the trail. This isn't your first road yet, so that's good, that's something too, so.
So did you ask one percent, percent and then pretty cola?
Three percent, yeah, cola, yeah, and just give us the numbers, I don't know what. And maybe the state, is it eight percent?
I don't know, I'll I'll check those emails again, I was checking them yesterday when I was off, and I. Wow, that seemed pretty drastic, but. And may, and that might be why they're hitting that too, so um. I don't know if Anisa, if she looked at. If anybody has reached out to you regarding salaries and if people are at, I mean, I thought we brought everybody up where. They needed to be last year, but I don't know if. If anything's changed in the.
China for ten thousand or, you know, like seven and a half or elected officials.
We brought everybody up to forty thousand.
That's why we lost our. So maybe we do need to look, maybe come to, I don't know, look at some of those salaries, I know Amanda's got all of the. Again, this on you, has all of the current salaries, and I'll have Amanda work up the one, two, and three percent, we can share the spreadsheet, so she can just. Type that in and do that, that's easy. I say it's easy. It's an easy thing for Amanda, actually, but um. We have, she has those spreadsheets already, so it'll just be a matter of doing that and then. Anything else, unless you guys have anything more. I, Tracy and I talked this morning, and we'll have the department head submit. We'll just, I'm just gonna have them let Tracy and I know when our budget's done, I'm not gonna have any submitted by paper, we will print our own and do what we need to do. But we would like to run the budget meetings where we'll just have the spreadsheets up online. You guys can have them on your computers and then we'll just make changes in real time, so that we have an idea of where we're at. When we're going through, so. Remember, the the items on the calendar too are more of the behind-the-scenes stuff, because. In years past, I think um when we're all in the meeting and there's a number of us in the worksheets. We found errors, um trying to do everything on the five, this will give us better time to. Make sure all of our formulas are correct, our numbers are correct. And all those things because. Then we ended up on the budget later anyway, but yeah.
Hopefully that'll help us, I think like Tracy said on the back end, make sure that everything is correct so that we're all working on the same first.
I think the German thing would be us and uh, guys.
And unless anybody, I mean, I'll have to be public in terms of
Everybody else can be online.
Or whatever, yep, they can do whatever they like. Mm-hmm, and whoever requests to be there, you know, if somebody's asking for a big software package.
Subol, Super, does anybody have any other, yeah, questions?
That's good, great.
Right, well, I'll get that all ready to go and thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and I don't think it'll change anybody. I'll send you guys.
We, we don't need to approve this calendar at all.
Nope.
Okay. Um, that finishes.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Yes, that's.
Yeah, item twenty one, uh, approved voucher for March twenty twenty two.
I move that we uh, approve the vouchers for March twenty twenty three. Okay.
Moving second and third question. Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye, aye.
Aye, all at the same time. Here is a senior ordinance for the county commission. On March seventh, twenty twenty three, I'd like to thank Brad and everybody at Road Bridge for hosting us today, guys. For being out here and setting this up. Uh, soon we'll be in the new, the renovated.
And we make the economy negative, then it's not done, not uh, that doesn't help anybody.
We all have a great afternoon and thank you regardless. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thanks, everyone.